Dunbar, Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Tonight in attendance, we have two selectmen. One selectman is out of town doing some personal business, recording. We have the town administrator and the... Philinen is... Philinen also has the secretary for tonight, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Kay Herrick.
And we have... we're live.
Mary's daughter, my sister.
Thank you. And first of all, I want to just... Before we begin the day, we know that today is December 7th. Remember it as the Day of Infamy. And the flag is... today was at half-staff. And the normal person is always doing it on appropriate state. He makes contact with the state. And should be raising or lowering the flag is Gary McCubbin. But he wasn't here today, so they reached out to Mert Mann. And Mert Mann did the appropriate thing of putting the flag at half-staff today in honor of Pro-Harbor. So kudos to both Gary McCubbin and Mert Mann for taking that job on for us for the town of Dunbar. Thank you. All right, Bob, we have some old business. Minutes, I believe.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 30th meeting as amended.
And I'll second that. There's some mysterious people in the address. I don't know the names of the few that were, I think, we got them corrected, amended correctly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved?
I should have sang because then you signed them anyways.
You know the tiebreaker here, so.
I would just like to be a little difficult.
Humor is the spice of life. Okay, we have two additional non-public minutes now. We have ones that started at 6:30, 1:00 p.m. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for the non-public section, non-public portion of the meeting on November 30th, starting at 6:31, and ended at approximately 12 minutes after that.
Do you have that on yours?
I do.
I didn't add it on.
Oh.
I'm sorry, but they are there.
There's two cents. Remember, we met in the... One, this was the... it was a personal action. It was a higher reaction.
Yeah.
And that's all it was.
Okay. I didn't know if we were waiting or not for the other person.
No.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
It's not going to change anything that happened.
And I have those. Do you have any discussion on the minutes as written?
No.
Okay. All clear?
Aye.
Now, we have the second set. We met for about a few minutes after the meeting, after the public session. It was non-public for about 10 minutes, as you recall, at 9:10. I think those are ones you probably reviewed earlier.
Okay, yeah. I didn't see that these got amended, so I guess I approve the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I'll second that. And I'll... any further discussion on those?
None.
None? Okay. All clear?
Yep.
All right. Okay, I'd like to take a moment for public comment, open up. This is where, if people are just joining us tonight, this is where we have public comment. You can express opinions, views, and sometimes we have answers and sometimes we don't. But I'll start over here. Leo, anything?
Okay, thank you.
All set.
This is public comment, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Say your name again.
Don Larson, Footlock Farms. And I'd just like to say that this Saturday, I'll be at the transfer station from 8:00 to 1:00 p.m. For anybody who wants to buy tickets for the chili supper on Friday, the 15th.
And please also announce the other locations where the chili supper tickets are going to be bought.
At the school business office and at the town office here and at the door.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And you also have a point... Someone asked me, is there vegetarian chili?
Yes.
Okay.
Karen Casano is making the vegetarian chili.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
And we also have turkey chili.
Okay. That's a little fat version, right?
And Gary McCubbin is making a Texas-style, will be a little spicy.
Okay, very good.
But we'll have the condiments there.
Yeah, you're good. Thank you. Sir? No? Gee? Okay.
I'm good.
And ma'am? Okay, I'm going to close the publics.
I'm going to ask Jeff.
I did?
Yep, I'm there.
I did?
I was looking down.
Okay. Okay, I'll close public comment for now. And now, I just want to talk about the Boston Post cane. Thank you for coming, Jeff, on behalf of your...
This is my sister Kay Herrick.
Thank you for coming tonight. We have the current holder of the Boston Post cane recently passed away. And according to the information that has been verified by the Dunbar Historical Society, the next oldest person in Dunbar is her mom, Jane Flack. She will be 96 years old, January 7th. And we'd like to award, take this opportunity to give the... pass the cane to you so you could award an appropriate ceremony at her... And since she has just recently moved into a nursing home.
Yes, that's correct.
And Ted, who's Ted Valerius, who is head of the Dunbar Historical Society, said that she definitely deserves honor. And nursing home has no... has no bearing on it. It's been... this precedent has been set in the past. And he's very much like to have her have the honor of the Boston cane. Okay?
And I told her about it, and I think it kind of made her day.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, love it.
Yeah, she had a little smile on her face. Said something about that's what old people get. So if you could come on up.
Yep.
Both of you, if you'd come up. And this is, if I understand, is a replica cane? Oh, okay. And we'll get the little video so the town can see it. So on behalf of your mom, you're accepting on behalf of your...
Yes, we're accepting this cane on behalf of our mother, Mary. Thank you.
And the only thing I ask is if you can get a picture of it.
Yes, we will.
We plan on that.
Yeah, I don't... Probably Saturday, the other permitting.
We'd love to put it on our website. Take a picture with your fellow residents.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for being here tonight. Goodbye. Thanks for coming. I hope it brings another few more smiles.
Oh, I'm sure.
Okay, Jeff, and after we're finished with you, I'm going to ask that we go out of... We're going out of order for a moment. Were you aware of that?
Do whatever you need to do.
Okay. We're going to go out of order just so we can keep the town business operational. So I'm going to ask the town clerk to come up and talk about her budget so she can go back to work.
There are some two extra copies up here if anyone would like one.
If you have an extra one, put Dave's back.
Oh, yes, I do. I'm recording, but I want to know if she...
I'm going to do it.
You're doing one.
Is that the same thing I have?
Ours is... well, ours are blank. She has provided us numbers.
She's provided numbers. Okay, very good.
We were going down... last week, we were going down a rabbit hole in the sense that we were starting to scrutinize the budget too much. And at first, blush at it. So tonight is just a presentation to let us know the highlights. And as we get into the budget season more, we'll be scrutinizing it with a... With those... shall I say those... Comment classes.
Well, you're done. Your attachments, and I didn't hand the attachments out to the public because I know that there'll be, you know, further scrutiny. And they don't really care about all that just yet. There are some attachments that give a breakdown of where some of those numbers are derived. So if you want to look it over, let me know when you're ready. I'll just say a few things about it.
I haven't seen how it read well.
Sorry, they're all...
Also, yeah.
Okay, so the deputy town clerk, well, the town clerk position, that'll be the standard as we discussed last, whatever the last meeting was. The deputy town clerk reflects the 2% pay increase. It's still based on 12 hours a week. There is additional coverage this year so that I can attend some more workshops. I've got a recertification coming up in 2018 that is mandated I attend. So I need him more hours for that. Elections, we have three elections this year. We were only supposed to have one last year, and we wound up with three. But due to the nature of those extra two, they were not the huge cost that a normal election would be. So I did hand out a sheet of the election and related expenses. Tried breaking it down, hourly rates for the workers, for everyone who receives compensation, and approximate hours on the election. And those were really hard to do for the ballot counters just because it depends on the election. I went back five years for the ballot counters, and I had them accumulating from 30 hours to, I think, the biggest one, the last presidential, was a total of 170 hours total. And fortunately for us, the many of the ballot counters donate their time. So, but I have to factor in... Have to factor that money in just to... Yeah, to cover in case they opt not to.
Okay.
The elections, in addition, going from one election to three next year, it's reflecting the 2% increase plus that extra hour of polling, which if you want to, like, whittle away at the budget, you could take an extra hour off the polls.
So notice.
We could knock that baby right down.
I hear you loud and clear on that one.
Yep. I did speak with Dave Constant of Constantly Pizza. He gave me a ballpark price for the catering, about $350 per election. That's, I think, we spent about $325 last year. And that $350 is not etched in stone. It just depends on how many workers we have and how many people he's got to feed based on the elections. Next item. The rest are, they're kind of mandated by the state. Another thing we don't have much control over, that's the animal population control fees to the state. I don't know if either of you are familiar with how that works. You take a standard dog license.
Right.
Just for a neutered or spayed dog is $6.50. Of that $6.50 that we collect, $2.50 automatically goes to the state. It's earmarked for animal population control program fees. 50 cents of almost every license, senior licenses that go for dogs owned by a senior don't apply to this, but 50 cents also goes to the state. And they call it dog license fee. I don't remember specifically what the earmark is.
Okay.
We're required to do that. Marriage license and vital statistics. If I issue a marriage license, it's a $50 cost to the couple being married. Of that $50, $43 is mandated to go to the state. And the town gets a whopping $7 for about an hour's worth of time out of us.
Okay.
And the same with the vital statistics. It's really a certified copy of a vital record. And if you buy a certified copy of a record, the fee, which is set by statute, is $15. The state gets eight of it, and the town gets seven. So those are fees. We don't always, if you look at the numbers, we don't always get up to where they are. But I guess I'd rather stay on the high end in case we have a run on certified copies of records. Certainly can lower that if you feel...
Okay.
Because we clearly haven't met it, but it's always a, as that crapshooters, they say, you don't know how many people are going to apply for a marriage license. You don't know how many people are going to request copies of their records.
Okay.
Okay? Next. There, I have a page there for miscellaneous items for the budget. Those are not listed on the town clerk section of the budget. But these are things that Lee needs to know in order to budget for her office supplies.
How's your notary? Are you not expiring?
2018, I believe.
Okay. Another year, okay.
So the... This is like check stock and toner ink and things like that that are specific to the machinery that I use. The tags for the dog licenses, we have to purchase those. That also comes out of the $6.50.
Who picks up postage for your office? Is it the town?
It's the town does.
They notice the non-mailings. A lot of mailings out of the clerk, appropriately so.
Well, we do $100 and something a month just to send out renewal notices. And we can, when you're not so busy with budgets, we can certainly talk about switching over, maybe phasing in, doing away with the mailings. I wanted to wait till the end of the year so I can tell you exactly how much postage was used by my office. And it may be who has to spend a year getting people accustomed to having their notices, renewal notices, sent by email. We're not required to send those. We do it as a courtesy, but it's become an expensive courtesy for the town. And we do print them and everything else. Workshops, we always have a spring workshop, and that's under these miscellaneous items. The annual conference, I try to, that $475 is the cost for a single occupancy floor room. I've only had one year where I have not been able to get that whittled down quite a bit by doubling up with another clerk. We usually have to try to think, it's like $290, something like that. I can usually get it down a bit.
Okay.
By sharing. Conference mileage is mandated by statute. And the IRS has not yet announced their 2018 rates as of this afternoon.
Excellent, thank you.
Now, down the bottom, these are things that I need to put in your lap. You recall, Phil St. Seer from Primax had done an ergonomic assessment of my office. Based on the fact that Gary and I always have to reach over for registrations, a lot of things are really bad for both of us ergonomically. I would like to, when Gary's back, take a ride down to Jayman down in Millieard, see what they have for workstations, and come back to you with a price for your consideration. Also, in 2019, I'm hoping to order an additional fireproof safe. It's time.
Is it, that's the requirement that we need at the floor, the subfloor?
We need the floor. So if you can budget in 2018 to get the shore, the shore floored, the floor shored up.
I understand.
You got it.
Because I think that was a limiting factor in the past.
Exactly. So I'd like to do it in two phases. First, we'll take care, we'll decide where it's going to go, and if we can get that floor reinforced. I think that was about the end of it in a nutshell. Did you have any questions for me?
You still want to say thank you? I think you're straightforward and everything. We'll have some questions later on as we include the budget process a little more closer.
Oh, thank you. Oh, I also gave you a sheet of so far our income. I made it from November to November, so I should have a copy there. Is it there? Last section.
Right, your treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report, yeah.
Yes.
Is it, yeah, it'll be your last page in the back.
There it is.
Yeah, looks like this. So from November 1st, 2000, January to November 2016 compared to January to November 2017, my budget has taken in almost $27,000 more for the year. So we're up a little bit from our income.
So those new cars, right?
There have been quite a few in the past year. I think we're going to see a big jump in December.
I just realized the nicety of having an older car.
An old car. They're cheap to register at least, maybe not to keep, but to register.
I know, but it's only, I don't know if too many miles, it's going to be there for a while. My wife said I get rid of my truck when it has 18 plates.
Yeah. I might buy it.
Okay. Bob, I have no more questions.
No, sir.
Okay, Lynn, I'll let you go back to work. Thank you. And I just want to appreciate, say thanks to John Jeff for having a flexibility here.
The Jeff and Jeff Show.
Exactly. Yeah, cool. Crime isn't crime.
Can I bring a chair up?
Absolutely.
I must drop a plan in front of you here. So with the schools, you know, working on a... Working on proposed addition. The, if you're not colorblind, the red is the outline of our existing buildings. This is the Firehouse Police Station. There's the existing school. Green is the proposed addition. The orange is where the current fire road is now. And the current parking area is on the west side of the building. The blue is where we need to reroute the fire road and the walkway. And the walkway to the inventory in the front as well. And this is the document that has gone out to bid. The drawings are out on the street right now.
For the building.
Right, for the building project. Talking with Jeff, he's pointed out quite rightly that this west parking lot is in really bad shape.
Yeah.
We were expanding a little bit to try to gain some additional parking. Right now, there's 16 striped spaces over there. When we stopped in the other day...
Did you actually see the stripes?
Yeah, it's all stripes. When we stopped in the other day, there were 19 cars parked. So they're already parking out on the grass and now all over the place. So by stretching the building and moving the fire lane, we can add some more pavement and pick up three spaces here and three spaces here without doing much impact on the ball field.
Okay.
So that's what's gone out to bid. And then we talked, talking to Jeff, you can jump anytime you want here, about the poor condition of this, and is there a way that we can collaborate between the town and the school to rebuild this parking lot as well?
Finish it, Jeff. He's already brought this up to me. He's in favor of collaborating.
Yep, yep. So a thought that we initially had was to reconfigure the parking area so that it's essentially two barrels of striped parking. It would be less area. We could pick up 10 more spaces for a total of 26 out there. The challenge with this, though, is it's not very conducive to the current use that goes on with people, the police and fire spinning around and turning around packing here. And the big thing is, there's no way for Jeff to plow snow off of that during the day when we've got cars all parked in here. So I agree with Jeff. We should probably stay with that same parking lot configuration, that same footprint. Some cars parked here, cars parked here.
So was this your original idea?
This was, because we've already gone out to bid, but talking with Mark Antonia, who's our civil engineer, about trying to expand our number spaces and maybe reduce the amount of pavement to save some money. We came up with that idea, but it's, functionally, it doesn't look like it's going to work.
Okay.
So I think we're still at this point here. If the project passes in its current configuration, we'll come with, Jeff and I will come to you at some point. We'll figure out how this collaboration will work to do this. Jeff has indicated that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Jump in, you bet.
I met with Jeff. We talked about it extensively. He was trying to get a handle on something that he could put out to bid that someone could understand and do. And my thought was, instead of taking a piece of it off and have a contractor be part of it, we do the whole thing under the town type thing. I mean, I honestly believe it would be cheaper for the town overall because we do it in-house where it's just bare rental on the equipment. And any of the materials that are bought or any of the services, like grinding up the pavement to reuse and all that, there's no overhead profit on top of that. We pay the bill.
Yep.
You know, the bare bill. So obviously, that is a factor. Also, by bonding it, we're going to be paying interest on that. And as the highway department goes, we're at this point in time where it pays-as-you-go situation. So I told Jeff that our plan would be, if this didn't pass, we were going to patch up that parking lot anyway. But I wasn't going to ask to rebuild it this year. But if this school project does move ahead, which we won't know until March, it would make sense to do it all at the same time, you know? So that's why I was working with Jeff on it. And at the end of the day, it's all town money, you know?
You cut it in the middle now.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, the idea of collaboration is, let's find the least expensive way to do this for the community.
They would probably, his contractor, due to the timing and everything else, they would remove the existing fire road. They would have to do their building.
During the construction period.
Yes, and then we wouldn't attack the parking lot until after school is up anyway. Because, you know, I mean, that would be the time we do it when we could just tear the whole thing out. Then they'd only be constructing then. It just seems to make sense. We talked at the shape of the park in a lot of great length. Jeff, mathematically, when you figure out how to lay it out, it's more efficient that way. But as I told him about the multi-use of it, and sowing, plowing, and all that. And that left the gray area, and how do you bid that out? So if we were to do it in-house, we can decide the shape and stuff. It'll lay the date. It wouldn't have to be decided today or tomorrow or whatever.
You have some rough ideas.
Yeah, some leeway. And, you know, lay it out, and then, you know, maybe pull them with on it. Because this is all kind of coming along pretty fast because they have a pretty tight timeline. And we buy the asphalt, you know, through our vendor and have it put down. And again, there's no, we get a pretty reasonable deal. There's no way of overhead and profit.
As you said, you'd have to budget for it.
Yeah, well, basically, what we do is we move it around within our budget. We wouldn't, I wouldn't add more to our budget to allow for this.
Okay.
We'd take what we do now and maybe a project, shift projects, yeah, which we do quite often.
With the parking lot, is that thick enough? Do you have to grind it, or would they scarify it?
We would grind it, and we would actually save what material we could, cut it down to a depth. We're not really sure what's there because there's been a lot of patches put on it over the years. In '98, we added some to it for parking. Some of it was done when the fire station was done. I don't even remember the year on that. It wasn't all of that, but that was a long time.
There's four different vintages of it.
Yeah, and you can actually see it if you walk around it.
I think it's smarter if they had to be ground or scarified, you know?
I think we're, pardon me, removing all the asphalt, probably digging out some material and putting it into gravel.
Do you save some money with recycling?
Yes, it does. If we were to, if you strip the asphalt off, load it in a truck, and take it to our pit and stockpile it, that's a cost, a lot of labor, trucking and all that. And then, once it's there, it's a product that isn't any good until you actually grind it up. So when we have gravel crushed, we grind it up. And that's approximately, right now, $5 a yard, so you incur that cost. If, what we would do in a situation like this, we would have this kind of a big rototiller, they would reclaim it, and we would remove that with whatever gravel was usable, stockpile it, cut it to the grade we needed to for a base, and then put that stuff back in and add more gravel. So it's a good process. I don't, if they, a vendor or contractor came in and did that little fire road, they would just haul it away because it wouldn't be practical to get somebody in to grind it. So again, when we haul it to the pit, it's a big, I feel it's a big expense. When we did this parking lot here, we went that route. It was, it ended up being pretty expensive. We had to handle the material, haul it away, yep, take it to the pit. Actually, it's still there in a pile waiting to be crushed the next time we crush gravel. Even in the short period of time, these reclaim machines, most all the paving companies, medium-sized paving companies have them now. It's a very efficient way of doing it. And it makes a product that's usable. So we kind of brainstormed together, you know, to try to make it work. And that, I was pushing the idea, the whole project to be done at once if we went forward. Because essentially, this parking area is horrible.
If you're this year, that exists.
Oh, yeah, this one is, you know, we've talked about this before. It's in a very rough shape. Even the fire road is rough. You get down at this point by the school.
It's breaking apart.
Yeah, it's all breaking apart there. So there's no part that's really excellent. And that would have been my plan this year, if this doesn't go ahead, do some matching here and just buy some more time, basically, pushing down the road for another year. But...
I have, I don't see, I think it's a common sense solution.
We kind of thought it was. And again, by putting it under the town umbrella, we didn't have to specify exact, this area here from A to B and all that. Because everybody's going to want to see that because they're going to want to know, what am I bidding on? And we're going to play it by ear. Maybe, you know, maybe we only got to dig it down, you know, 10 inches. Maybe we're going to dig it down two feet. We don't know that, but we'll get there.
So the bids we're going to get will include the paving. But once we set our subcontractor, we'll negotiate out some of these things. They will, as Jeff mentioned, just to put the addition on, they're going to have to take out that length.
They'll itemize it enough, you think?
Yes, yes, definitely. We have a construction manager, so he's...
It'd be interesting to see how much they are...
Well, Jeff, I believe him, he thinks it's a good idea. He wanted to get a true cost of what this was gonna cost the taxpayers. You know, if you put a, I mean, we could do the whole thing that way if you want to.
No, but it's nice that he's gonna do it, and you can actually quantify how much savings you're gonna bring to the town.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, that small area is probably not gonna, you're not gonna notice as big a one if it was a whole area. And then again, we're gonna end up with another patch system.
Which-
None of it's the end of the world, don't get me wrong.
No, I see you patching this area right here. And then, when it comes to where should you be doing, this will be blue too.
Right, exactly.
That was the plan. And that layout is subject to change. We're gonna address it again and try to come up with the most, best use of the area.
Yep, see if we can, you know, get as many parking spaces out there as we can without really taking too much away from the ball field and the activities happening out there. And also keep it functional for the-
Yeah, I was a big proponent, keep it big because you know what happens with the snow around it? We just push it, and we push it to that fire core. Pile it up.
Kids love it.
Yep.
No, actually, my questions don't have to do with that, because that makes sense.
But I have a couple of different questions, what am I asking? Only because we get blasted by the residents that look at their tax bills, is it possible, I know maybe you've entertained looking at possibility of warrant articles that show where you could say what cost was, you know, when you have your different things and how you voted so that people can get a clear, if you're opposed to it or if you support it or whatever, you know, like we have in ours. Is that something you might be looking at?
Yeah, we've already been approached by a taxpayer who's recommended that to us and the board has included that in our draft warrant, two warrant articles that will stipulate going forward that the, essentially, the practice is our current practice, but it's not been formalized. So they're gonna make sure it gets formalized so that the cost and the, any increase in the tax rate will be included on the warrant article as well as the vote of the-
Because you probably understand, every time the tax bill goes out, we're getting, people are asking us a hundred things about it. So it makes it easier if they see it in front of them or not.
And feel free, if you have questions about the tax bill that are school-related, send them to me or any, or send them to any of the board members, we'd be happy to-
That's the letter that is in the basket?
Since I have you at captive audience right now. You, it was brought up, several weeks ago, about the factories.
Yes.
We brought to a regional planning group for advice, we brought to the planning board, our planning board twice. We have a response for you and it's to the school board from us.
Okay, from the town to the school board.
Yes.
We're meeting next Monday, I'll bring it to the board.
Okay. And, but I think as, essentially, we're saying that the practicality of, if we, we need to be roaming a lot more to make it frank.
Okay.
That's the bottom line.
Yeah, there's just challenges to implement as well as cost improvement and tracking.
Tracking is probably the biggest challenge.
A lot of towns are finding that they actually have to return some of this.
Yeah, because you have a certain window that you have to-
Right.
And if you don't manage it correctly, you gotta give it back.
You know, and we, again, I know you're on board with this, but we've had that age-old argument that keeps going around, but whose responsibility is what? The inside of the walls, the inside of the house? The past, the town has done in a parking lot issues, and again, like I said, it's all town money. It's all the same family.
I'm just glad we're working together on this.
Yeah, I thought it was a prime mat out there with Mark and Tony.
You can keep those, I got it set for the act two.
Sorry, she would, one of my girls left me this night.
We, as things progress, we'll know more and basically, at the end of the day-
But right now, you just, we don't have any, I don't have any opposition. I mean, as I said, it's just for tax grade benefits.
And then, you know, we really won't have a definitive answer until town meeting time.
All right, thank you both.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, we're gonna continue on with the, if you have a preliminary budget. Mary, come on up. Okay, as I said, what we're doing, we're not scrutinizing the budget.
Nope.
We're looking at it and we're looking at any highlights you want to point out to us right away. And we're just collecting our items so we can, we'll scrutinize it if we get further into the budget season.
Okay.
We need to know any surprises.
We're actually pretty happy to present it because it's miraculously lower than last year.
Ooh.
Which you probably don't hear very often.
Well, it's great.
Well, me, this is for you and I. I didn't do.
Nope, that's fine, you're supposed to do. Well, you're gonna give us a number and then fill it in right there.
Yeah, yes.
Yep, we are a few minutes ahead of schedule, so-
Okay, and Davis is not here?
Dave's idea, we're cutting it out. So as I say, that floor is yours. Tell us what's going on for the twenty eighteen.
Well, it is a little lower.
Okay.
But in a good way, for a good, for good reasons.
Okay. And we promised to get the doors set down soon.
I know, okay.
Mary's done a great job finding some areas to trim a little bit, yet at the same time, moving a little more money towards the areas that we felt needed it, like programs. She's done such a great job kind of offering something for everyone and the attendance for all of these programs is way up, which is great. And circulation in the library is up. More people have been coming in, more books are being taken out. So it's really being used a lot more than it has been in years. So that's all very positive. So she was able to work on the budget, as I said, trim some areas and then we have a little more money for new books so that people are finding what they're looking for, you know, and the hot releases come out and then some more for programming, but, yeah.
Oh, people are recreational readers. Definitely seen an increase in fiction, the DVD usage, even things like cookbooks. Add a few more cookbooks, they'll go out. So all around, children's things higher even.
The programs have been, I think, have been wonderful during the year. I mean, they caught my interest, I've attended a few of them already and, I never go to a library. This was an interesting year for me, I've been to a library more than six a year.
Yeah, that's great, that's great, and it's, we're happy to do that.
Yeah. So we just moved around and what, you would, do you want to explain the salary?
Well, the salary is where the, it's a less amount because we did have Andrea worked for many years and then for a while we had, you know, and she had had a higher rate since she had been there for a long time. And then we had Nancy as librarian, and now we have Mary as our director. And she's had, I guess you would call them a page or her-
I, yeah, I've done the, I've done the two jobs. And we've had a page who basically works eight hours a week during the evenings that we're open, Tuesdays and Thursday nights. Our current page is due to go off to college in, I don't know, August, I guess. And in looking for the future, we discussed having, not, not, not a page anymore, but maybe someone a little bit with more, a little more education and have them work about ten hours a week to, you know, make sure as the storytime goes along, offer a few more children's programs during the week and keep that program, keep the programs flowing.
And even if we do hire that part-time librarian in the future, it still comes in under what we were in the past. Because of, yeah, because Nancy and Andrea had both been there for a long time. And now Mary has been doing sort of the jobs of, that both of them were doing. She's really taken over all the, the website, redesigned that and, you know, the mailings have been great, the MailChamp and has just made a lot of really positive things.
Visiting the school?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yeah, a lot of good things.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I do. You're, you displayed a little bit differently. What you're asking from the town is eighty-seven, six forty? That's what you're asking?
Yes.
Of course, last year we had you on ninety-four, six ninety. So that's a substantial decrease, five thousand four hundred ninety-two.
Yeah.
How can you complain about that?
Right. And as we said, that comes from the payroll change.
I understand, and the thing is, and with time, as people get senior, the expect pay raises. And that's to be expected.
Right.
Did you have a question on FICA?
Not, well, did we?
I think George, our treasurer, had suggested putting that in there too, but I don't know that we did in the past.
Yeah, you see-
We don't, we don't have an I S R FICA here, and I wasn't sure if that was-
I'm not sure I understand that.
It was federal taxes.
Don't you do that when you distribute your payroll where it automatically deducts out of your pay and then it allocates a portion that-
I, yes, I think, yes, but I-
It's the match of the town?
We just didn't write it in on this.
Okay, so just for our own purposes?
I think it's, yes.
But it doesn't necessarily have to be in-
I think the software must automatically deduct and generate and post both sides, employer, employee deductions.
George, the accountant, wanted those lines.
Okay, that's-
Yes, we did, we did sort of a major housekeeping with the, with our cookbooks going forward to the future, to kind of condense things into really what we do rather than just a bare, our old, our old way of reporting wasn't very-
It was alphabetical, it was in blood.
It was basic and it wasn't very good for reporting at trust.
So that information, does this include with the salary?
Yes.
And Lyndon Nickerson, who does our accounting with Mary, they've sort of come up with a new template for our financial sheets each month that are a little bit more, you know, able to understand and make a little more sense.
Did we remember to give you a copy of your payment this month? Okay.
But I see we got it, thank you.
But we'll, I'll have to set up a reminder in her calendar so it pops up and says, hey, send the report to-
Now, there were a couple of building issues that we wanted to bring up. That we, I don't think we have in the budget yet, or do we?
Well, you asked, they asked for like an inventory of some things around that we thought needed some attention.
Under the MOU, the town handles the, um-
We, we wondered when the last time the furnace was cleaned.
JR usually is, I think he's scheduled to clean it this month. And he does all of ours.
Okay.
And so I get it done annually.
Okay.
Okay, that was something that we weren't sure.
I think it's the fifteenth he's scheduled for, so next week or so.
Two big issues, we're, we're reining with the idea of, we gotta go to the town, ask for money for the building to be painted. I'm concerned about the exterior of the building, we have raw wood exposed and subject to the elements. And either we preserve the building with some new paint or we let it rot. And I think the voters need to pay, basically chime in on this because it's a, it's a, the building is in dire need of some repairs on the edging and a good coat of painting, scraping, sanding and painting. And we're engaged with that. We were gonna start this year, but it was just too much money. And those are legitimate bids. We're gonna have to put it out for bidding and we're gonna need a substantial amount of money from the voters to do that.
Is that lead paint?
It has lead paint too, it has been positively tested with lead paint. So there's gonna be some mitigation for that. You know, the small fixes we made are small, but just, I mean, we're worried about the, earlier in the year, we were worried about the air conditioning supply, the air conditioning unit on the outside, that's been addressed. We're worried about the, the men's coffee took care of the stairs with the nails. And right now, the biggest concern we wanna get done before the end of the year is the door.
The door, yes, yep. And that's been ordered, that'll be one. It's already been ordered, it's gotta be paid for, so, yep.
We didn't, we don't really have much on, on that line. We, we wondered about the furnace cleaning, we wondered maybe if our-
And you got the report on the water too.
The, yes, I got that, yes. Our hardwood floor maybe needs some attention?
You said it did some in the past.
Yeah, it's been a while. And then yesterday, with the joint loss tour, we discovered that one of our emergency lighting fixtures is not working at all.
And I, and we suspect, John Wigan was there, that the three smaller ones are tied into that big one, because there's four actually that are non-functional in the main floor.
And that's life safety, so that's gonna be addressed probably at a rather quicker basis.
And that, that inside crash door that goes from the library to the foyer is not-
Yeah, the crash bar needs-
Yeah.
And the fire chief said it's also emergency light that needs to be addressed right away.
And we'll probably put those as a higher priorities for sure, there's no doubt about that.
Maybe I can run another report on the building.
Yeah, we might, we might see what we have left over in this budget so we can get some, use some there. We have some dollars left.
Cover some so that we can take care of the smaller issues.
Now wait till March.
Okay.
And then I think a new toilet was mentioned last year.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't get to the new toilet. We should maybe research the toilet.
The, the, sounds fun. The plumber last year had, was there to fix something and said that it really should be replaced.
Yeah, it wasn't.
So that's, that's something that I-
Is that the one in the little boys room?
Not the little boys, but the handicapped.
I had these three.
That's the one that gets the most action.
So did you actually put that in on here somewhere?
Toilet, it's under the, under facilities expenses on that building repair maintenance line.
Yeah, furnace clean, hardwood floor and toilet.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have that in our budget.
Okay.
So that's already part of it, that the toilet, which I think he had said would be five hundred and-
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I think, you know, you've enhanced the programs that, at the library, there's a lot more usage.
Yeah.
It covers from, I guess toddlers right up into elders. And now you're proposing that your budget's gonna be smaller last year, so it isn't much to complain about.
No.
In the exterior of the building, you gotta help me educate our voters. I took pictures of the building when it was a nice sunny day, of some of the damage, all the damage already occurred to it, and some of the work needs to be done. And I was gonna, instead of using words, I was gonna use pictures.
Okay, yes, good idea.
And, but the thing is, but it's not, it's not cheap, that's a challenge. And but the thing is, I think as a town-
It's gonna go pretty fast, it's already going.
Yeah.
Building like that, if you wanna preserve it.
So that was one of our challenges for this year, and supportive of the library. We wanna make sure that's addressed. Okay, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We will scrutinize this a little bit more and we'll probably have more questions than that. We'll, if it's in the middle of the meeting, if it's something that's hot, we'll call you back in or shoot you an email that says, single and eighty-one question.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Got that one for Dave in there?
Where was this?
Dave's file. Mary, do you have an extra copy? Extra copy of this?
Did you get my best side?
Yeah, thank you.
Did you get my best side?
I did.
Which side is that?
Woody, a transportation was next, but you're gonna need to talk about in private about the doll, the scholars. That's what I assumed, I just wanna make sure, before we, we're, do, prefer you move each of the back of the non-public, okay? Okay. Chief?
Hi, this is Stas Sopra. Mr. and Mrs. Sopra have made some donations to pass the police department. This yearly, they offered to make a donation in the way of equipment. What they'll be doing is funding a portable radio, our portable radio is coming in with light, kind of like our mobiles are, and they're purchasing portable radio and, as well as software that will complement the equipment that we purchase under the highway safety grant.
I bet this chairman, the other, just impersonating the other day, you called, we're talking about trains.
Yes, yes.
Well, I just wanna say, on behalf of them, pardon, thank you. Your generosity is most appreciated. And I know the chief, chief always gonna, he always gets beat up every year, at least I've been seeing this, I started last year with this, but he's, he gets beat up all the time for his budget. And so donations like this are very welcome by him, especially the town in memory, so I appreciate that.
Alita and I both feel that the department is doing a very good job. The chief is very proactive in his thinking and, you know, doing things for the department to keep it up to date.
It's nice to see him building his house in town too.
Yes, so we're, you know, privileged to be able to help the town in this way, so.
Because I appreciate that, thank you, Mary.
I just have a small thank you note, I'm starting to you.
Okay.
Okay. Just needed to verify that this is the correct note. You can put an extra few zeros there.
Hope I paid for the library for a painting party for the town.
Oh, you don't wanna hear the quotes we got last year, you really don't wanna hear it. Did a nice job on the town hall. It was good, it was good. But the thing is, it was nice because it was all, you could use it in my ladder. The problem with it, the major tool they're gonna need is a man lift. And when they rent, some people sometimes use man lifts, they don't, most painters have to rent them.
Thank you very much.
And that's from all of the others.
It's great. And again, it's a privilege.
Thank you.
Being in town and.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it, so.
Very good. Thank you, chief.
Can we get a copy of this with the signature?
Okay. It was a great meeting that day. We talked about my grandchild, who likes trains. And so he identified some things he's been hanging on at home, he's gonna.
Yeah, they'll be near Saturday.
Very good, appreciate it. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Actually got some ads from the fifties.
Oh, really?
Suitable for framing. I have to make a quick motion.
We have ads in these two for sale, but I don't see what you see. I don't see what you see. You still have to make a motion to accept it.
Yeah, I should. Well, I was gonna make a motion. I'd like to make a quick motion to accept the donation of three thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars and sixty-three cents to purchase equipment for the police department. It's being donated on by Mr. and Mrs. Zofa.
And I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? I'd just like to say he's, it's great, much appreciated by the town.
Especially Philip Coors.
Yep. And the court chief can't be, you know, he needs help with his budget. So all in favor? It's been accepted.
I was just wondering if you were gonna write you a check yourself, is that?
No. I'm gonna put a few extra zeros there, but I'm not gonna, I'm gonna be very grateful. Okay, speaking of money, come on up, Bob. It's been, it's been a good evening for money. Let's keep it on a run.
It's not going out.
Even if, even if they have Mr. Martel in the back smiling, he never smiles. Well, I'm turning in some of his money.
He too is a ticket buyer.
He bought a ticket, excellent.
Yes.
Okay, what you got there for us?
I got you four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, I believe it is, for the last two weeks that the transfer station.
This is what tickets sales?
For tickets and just straight donations, a lot of donations.
Excellent.
So I would say two-thirds of it is donations.
Okay, then, then I'd like to make a motion per RSA thirty-one dash ninety, colon ninety-five dash B, number three, that we accept four hundred and ninety-nine dollars from the fundraising by John Lawson for the purpose of weeks across Dunbar.
Second.
I don't think there's any discussion.
So all in favor?
Aye.
And we'll see you Saturday.
Yeah, see you tomorrow. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Okay, I have another motion, Bob.
Yep.
Don't get, don't get too excited now.
More money.
More money. Okay. I'd like to make another motion, Bob, per RSA thirty-one, colon ninety-five, dash brattle, Roman numeral three, B, we accept three hundred and twenty-five dollars from fundraising by the residents of Corin Pond that will go into the general fund, but specifically will be earmarked for treatment of mill foil. And just, that's my motion.
And I'll second your motion.
And just to let you know where this money is coming from, they alluded to it last week, but the residents of, in the area of Corin Pond, they had a, they organized an individual yard sale for the purposes of raising money to help with the mill foil project. And they, not only, for those people who didn't participate in the yard sale, they actually just donated money. So this is just a proceeds from the yard sale that they had in the neighborhood to help with the mill foil project. That was my discussion, and do you have any further comments on that?
No.
Okay, been all in favor of accepting the money?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Lean, we've just accepted the money of three hundred and twenty-five dollars. You have another? Okay, I can go through the mailbox. Let's go to a public comment first. Your turn's coming up, and you have anything for a public comment, sir?
Oh, just nice to see, over nine thousand dollars come in tonight, including the budget.
Yep.
I know.
Yeah, so it's pretty good for one night's take.
Okay. Well, we're gonna go through the mailbox for. Woody, this is, this is something that you were not aware of early in the week, and I just wanna make sure that the, Allison put out a, it's about the curtailing of the credit card purchases in the year and close up. And the key thing is try to get as many invoices as you can immedi, as soon as something comes in. Let's say you have a repair on end of the year. It's gotta, get an invoice right away up to Allison. Because we wanna close up the books, I was alluding to that earlier today.
Wait a minute, you just said something, get as many invoices as you can? You mean get your invoices in.
Get your invoices in. No, but he, he made, he made the comment to me, I was talking with him this afternoon on a couple of things, he made the comment that trash continues regardless of whether we make deadlines or not. Trash continues, we have to pay for it. I said, well, just make sure that we get the appropriate invoices in a timely manner, especially as we close up year to year. Came out the wrong way, thank you, Bob. That's, that's okay, that's why I let out the invoices. All right, last week, there was a discussion. They wanted to see the letter that the, we sent to School Construction. I think it's a great letter. We should, that was sent out November nineteenth. And they gave them thirty days to do the project and.
We haven't heard from them yet, right?
I have a feeling it's.
So we'll probably end up having a litigation.
Okay.
And they wanted to, put that in this pile.
Well, I'll put it there.
Okay. Woody, another request from you for Christmas holiday? Oh, yes. I have no problem with it. I recommend we, we carry, just working out with the supervisor as far as when to take the date. Consensus is, I think, I have no issue with that. I'll be in issue with this one.
I don't know, I signed that also, but I don't have a problem with taking it within whatever the required time is.
And this is another holiday, just working out with Lean when you wanna take it. So thank you for bringing, bringing it to our attention. It just goes to Lean. Just, I guess, working out with him when there's the best time.
Yeah, but again, I stress that, so we're trying to work within the guidelines, is that okay?
Yeah.
I'll give you a copy of the memo.
Okay, this is just the copy of the letter we sent to the supervisor. Do you wanna see what we wrote?
I saw this, right?
I'm coming to the end of my mailbox. That's the later. Okay, I wrote this, so. Did we talk about that already? Okay, that's enough. Okay, that goes to the end. Okay, then, in fact, I wanna thank Woody here for bringing this to the attention. But our personnel manual defined firefighters as employees. There was some confusion there. And some clarification was being brought out by the New Hampshire Municipal Association. And what they did, they, New Hampshire Municipal Association actually researched this a short while back. And they went into the RSAs. And I need, we need to redefine firefighters in our personnel plan to reflect the RSAs of New Hampshire. And I think they did a, I'm stealing some of the language which New Hampshire Municipal Association came up with, extracted directly from the RSA. And it's essentially a one-sentence change in page six of our personnel plan. And it's more a, it's clarification and delineation as stipulated in the RSA. So I'd like to make a motion, we implement those few words into the.
Okay, and could you, so that the public knows what the wording is?
The wording is, in our current personnel plan, they list firefighters as employees, as, they list as firefighter employees are considered part-time employees, not eligible for benefits described in the manual, except where noted or to the extent required by state or federal law. And per RSA, if, they are not employees, they're, they've fallen to three categories. Firefighters in New Hampshire are either volunteer, paid on call, or permanent employees. We have no permanent employees in the town of Dunbar. We have a fire chief, who is essentially a paid on-call fire chief. And the remaining of the force of fire department are volunteers. And so we're changing firefighters, not as employees. But the new wording reflects firefighters are considered volunteer or on-call and not, then the, continually not eligible for benefits as described in this manual, except where noted or to the extent required by state federal law. And so it's just a clarification.
And I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? No, enough to Woody, since your, any public memoirs you're coming this way. There was an issue that I think Woody kind of brought to my attention. And scrutinizing this manual, it was definitely, was contrary to what's, the state has in RSAs. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it's a one-sentence, six-word change, you know, if you'd be so kind, implement that one. Okay. Public comment, no more public comment? We're gonna go into non-public now?
Can I just?
Oh.
I'm just gonna bring, currently I have a third quote for the annual reports that I'm working on, so that's work in progress.
Right.
They all fall underneath our guidelines for the less than ten thousand dollars. So I'm getting three tele, three phone quotes or email quotes. And they're roughly in the same range that we budgeted for last year. So I'm trying to get the best price for that in the five thousand dollar.
That's for?
The town report printing.
What about the, someone, are we looking at, also outsourcing the formatting?
Yeah, and in my request, I'm asking what their hourly rate is and approximately how many hours it would take for them to combine all those reports from PDF, Excel and other formats into a word or a document printing.
And I still wanna make, each department still will give, will have an opportunity to prove it. Okay. Final version before it goes to print.
Yep, yep, yep.
Answers my question.
That's, that's gotta be, I don't want any printed without initials from the appropriate department. Okay.
Okay, and then just wanna let you know that the back of the town office building has been completed with the stone under the drip edge. I'm not sure which selectman he talked to, but he understood that the back was the priority because there's already rot. And he did want us to be aware that there's a lot of rot in this corner and then on the other end of corner by this bulkhead that will need to be addressed in, in maintenance because it's just too far gone.
I, I meant to walk around this afternoon, I, it's kinda ridiculous to walk around in the dark.
Yeah. He did not get the other sides done, but I'm gonna encumber those funds. And he said if he has time to get to the rest of it, he will, but he will keep that price for the springtime to get the rest done.
Before the ground freezes, right?
Right, yep.
Okay. And just why I have you there, you did allude to the door, it's work in progress as far as.
Yep, we've processed just a payment for the blank of the door to get it.
Machined.
Machined and whatever else it needs to, whatever that is, yep. And so once, and that's been ordered locally through Mass Road Lumber.
And any update on the hardware selection?
He's gone ahead with the brass and that's included in the price right now. So the price that we're, I authorized today. So all the, that's left outstanding would be the labor cost.
Dave, Dave did share with me, he felt that the price was too high. He'd back off his oil, bronze.
Yeah, I think what he, it was like a couple hundred dollars more than what he had originally given us.
Okay, but that was, Bob, you said was gonna be, could be up to five hundred, so we have the latitude.
Yeah.
Anything else, Lynn?
Nope, that's it.
Bob, I'm gonna let you chime in.
Nope, I don't have anything.
Exciting when.